Town of Winchester's zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general law 40A, 40B, and other applicable laws. There's a sign-in sheet at the entrance. If you have not, we ask you please sign in as you come in. Wincam will be televised and recording this hearing. In attendance tonight, we have zoning board members. We will have Dorothy Symboli in a few minutes, David Feigenbaum, Mark Anderson. Harut Gazarian is not here tonight, Andrew Colet and Lauren Jonak. Tom Ashen will be producing the meeting minutes. The applicant is Brian Melanson of Melanson Development Group, who is being represented by attorney Mark Vaughn. Aaron Wilson is here from VHB as a peer reviewer to speak to the stormwater. Rich O'Connell is here from RJ O'Connell for the applicant regarding stormwater. Dennis Carlon is here, is also present, sorry, as our design peer reviewer. Michelle Littlefield is here from Cube 3 for the applicant regarding design. The applicant's proposed project is located at the corner of Washington Street and Swanton Street, specifically 278 and 297 Washington Street, 12 and 16 through 20 Swanton Street. Mr. Melanson has applied for a comprehensive permit under chapter 40B for the mixed-use development of 64 rental units with ground floor commercial space. Tonight, we will give updates on peer review, accept any new correspondence, take public comment, attend to some clerical business, i.e., accept meeting minutes, and schedule our next meeting. If town officials are present, they will be given an opportunity to speak and ask questions. As a reminder to anyone addressing the board, you must please give your name and address for the record. In consideration of time, the chair may limit the length of all marks. We'd like to put a 8:30 PM time. What do we think? 8:30 PM time limit on this meeting? If we can, we'll extend if we have to. We will begin with accepting the meeting minutes. So you --
I move to accepting.
Right on cue there. Any other, any second?
Second.
Okay. The three of us do it. All in favor of accepting the 11:18, 2025 meeting minutes. I'm Mark Anderson.
I'm David Feigenbaum.
I'm Lauren Jonak.
Okay. So we will continue petition 40B Z-25-40B-1, comprehensive permit, application for 278, 292 Washington Street, 12, 16 through 20 Swanton Street. Before we go into the updates, I will move to accept the following correspondence into the record. November 18th, 25 Danzil letter in favor, 11:18 Healy letter in favor, 12:5:25 Drain concerns, 12:9:25 Bloomsack concerns, 12:9:25 Radicchio exterior comment, exterior design comments, I apologize, 12:3:25 Attorney Vaughn email with revised waivers and exhibit, 12:3:25 VAI responses to November 14th, 25 tool comments, and the 12:9:25 Design Peer Review notes. That was a motion, sorry, to be clear.
That was your motion?
That was my motion.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor? I'm Mark Anderson.
I'm David Feigenbaum.
I'm Lauren Jonak.
Great. And perfect timing, Dorothy. Just got through the administrative matters, so we'll get something to get your bearings.
Oh, bearings.
We want to start with the traffic and transportation review update. That's where we're at, agenda-wise.
Right, right, period. Okay. So, last meeting, VAI gave the recommendations and Tool provided follow-up. VAI submitted responses on December 3rd, 2025, the Tools' November 14th, 25 comments. Do you want me to keep going?
Nope. I don't know if we want to --
Do we need to discuss those?
Not now, maybe later.
Okay, that's fine. With regard to design review, the scope and fee was submitted to the applicant. Applicant provided a check. Mr. Carlon has begun his review, and he met with the architect. And I think they're both present here tonight?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And the development team was on Zoom when we met.
Okay, wonderful. With regard to stormwater peer review, VHB and RJ O'Connell Associates are in attendance. Aaron Wilson from VHB and Rich O'Connell from RJ O'Connell. Yes? Okay, great. And then pending request from the zoning board. We previously requested a more detailed rendering of the facade on Swanton Street, including three-dimensional renderings of the units facing Swanton Street. Do we, are those going to be presented at all?
I can address that. We don't have anything to present tonight as we're going through peer review comments with Dennis. We'll come back when we have updated design with more views and more specific information on the detail on the project.
Okay. And we also --
Can I --
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to be clear, that was my request. It'll be through Dennis, but just to make clear, I want a real clear, three-dimensional rendering of the Swanton Street side, including large enough that I can see what it looks like close up.
David, can I ask, is it, you want a physical, three-dimensional rendering?
Not yet.
What do you mean, not yet?
Well, I want to see the drawing, and then if I can't understand it, I might ask her tomorrow.
Okay. So you want a drawing, a three-dimensional drawing or visual representation?
Of the Swanton Street facade, not just a flat head-on view.
Understood.
You know what I mean.
And I think, as we've talked about, I think he's looking for something closer than what's behind you, in terms of --
Dennis and I discussed briefly what types of drawings might be appropriate to convey that information to you.
Once you guys get through your process.
Good, that's good.
We don't want to create an image that is instantly outdated, so --
Good.
Okay. And we also had a request for revised waivers to explain more specifically what is being sought.
Which we have.
Which we have, okay.
I just wanted to be clear. So that's this --
The 12:3 document.
The 12:3 document?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me.
So the petitioner's provided those, okay. And attorney Vaughn provided his extension for the 180-day deadline. The new deadline is January 30th, 2026. And the only comment I wanted to make on that is, I think, last time, we were under the impression that we needed to make a decision by that date.
We just need to close the hearing, right?
I believe, yes. I believe we need to close the hearing by that date. I don't know how long we have.
I think it, Paula noted in here later, so the 180-day deadline, as of right now, is January 30th. We have to hear all testimony, accept all plans, correspondence, blah, 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 by that date. We should close the hearing by that date, and then we have to have a decision 40 days later.
Right.
So we have some time, or we get, we have to render our decision based on our vote, and then 14 days to record it.
Okay.
But the 180 days ending on January 30th is later than the original 180 days.
Yes, though, I can't remember what it was before, but they extended it or agreed to an extension.
So that's, I'm sorry. It's the, it's the 180-day deadline, not, as you were just saying, there are other stuff that comes after it.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Right, we just don't, we shouldn't feel pressed that we need to make a decision by January 30th. It's just that all information that we need in order to make our decision needs to be submitted and reviewed and --
We have 40 days to make our decision.
Right.
And another two weeks to them.
Yep.
Render it.
Okay.
Okay. So where I, I'm sorry, where are we at this?
That's, that's whether or not we want to go back, and if we have questions about any, I think, any of the three --
So traffic, transportation, so do we want --
I know we haven't heard much from stormwater at all, so this would be the kind of the first time we've heard that one, but --
Well, do we want to start with, with traffic?
Yeah, I think we'll go in order.
I think so.
Yeah, let's go in order.
That's okay.
Oh, yeah, sure, attorney Vaughn.
So just for the record, attorney Mark Vaughn with the firm of Rehm &amp; Bronstein. We actually didn't bring with us tonight Scott Thornton, the traffic engineer. I didn't see that on your agenda. I apologize if there was an expectation that you wanted him here. So I know he did submit that follow-up letter to the board, but certainly if there's questions on that, that, but I just wanted to make it clear, he was not here. We have RJ O'Connell on the site civil side, and also, obviously, Michelle on the architect side, but, yeah.
Is it possible to have the traffic I come next time?
Certainly talk with him if the board did have follow-up questions on what was submitted, but --
So we should let you know between sometime?
Sure, yeah. We're just trying to be mindful of not having to, it's a costing expense with everyone coming out, so, yeah.
We did, well, let's, did anyone have any questions on the responses back? Like, do we need to ask them to?
I haven't looked at it that closely, but I can imagine that I might.
Well, based on --
I'll just say, I think it's, it's an important issue because of Swanton Street. It's a busy street, and so I may have questions.
Is anyone here from VAI?
Okay, I mean, I think there's a lot of outstanding things that need to be discussed. I mean, there's, you know, the encouraging of bicycle use and whether or not we do a bike lane and, you know --
That's a whole discussion.
I mean, there's, yeah, there's a lot there that needs to be addressed, and whether or not it's relevant to, I mean, there's, there's just a lot that came up in both the town's review and their response. So why don't we push this off to January, whenever we decide that meeting's going to be, and then we'll make sure that we're going to resolve traffic/transportation in January? Does that sound good?
Certainly. I mean, I think one option to, I think the letter was sent to your consultant also at Tool, so I don't know whether they were comfortable with it or not.
Right, we can, we can maybe take place, you know, do some responses back and forth. Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm thinking, just maybe to make a more efficient use of everyone's time, if, and I forget the woman's name, I'm sorry, a Tool that appeared in your consultant, but perhaps she could look at what was submitted, and if she had any follow-up questions, we could go through that process, but --
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we don't need to, we don't need to hear that process. I mean, if you guys come up with something between the consultants and you come back to us, and you say this is what we've agreed to.
Yeah, and I'll note, there's a bunch of these that were agreed with the recommendations, so there's only, I think, a handful of ones where there was some questions.
Correct, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So, and so --
No one is here, I meant to say Tool, not VAI. No one's here from Tool tonight, right?
I don't think so.
I didn't see either, yeah.
But we can, but certainly, we can probably, we can, well, we're going to have to finalize it in January.
Understood.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, design peer review update?
So, all I can say is what I think has been communicated thus far is that there was a, comments have been provided by Dennis Carloni, who's here, and then I know there was a meeting a couple of days ago that took place between Dennis and Michelle from Cube 3, and it sounds like they made some fair progress on going over some items, but I am beyond my pay grade on that stuff, so I'm going to defer them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Same way about legal issues.
Yeah, there you go.
Hello.
Hi.
For the record, I'm Dennis Carlon. I met with Michelle Quinn Littlefield at her office in Boston, and we went over the drawings. One thing I wanted to mention, and I'm sure you know this, is that even by January 30th or whatever actual report date there is, there will likely be conditions that the development team needs to meet to fulfill the permit. And so it's possible not everything will be resolved by then, but there will be indications of what the board wants to see. That's why the design review doesn't end at the permit, the initial permit for the project to move forward. It's actually when it gets built. And there will be changes. For instance, the selection of brick. We propose, like in every project I've worked on, that a test wall be built when foundations are started, so that you can actually see it outside, what the materials are, how the colors work together. Because in here fluorescent lights, and I mentioned this to Michelle, that brick isn't lively enough. If you look at the renderings with the sunset light on the facade, that's the color of the brick we want, something that has life to it. And samples don't convey that. Same way that little samples of paint are misleading, and you paint a three-foot-by-three-foot sample on your wall to see what it really means. So on projects that I've worked on before, maybe half of these comments will say still to be resolved, but you make it a condition that it be resolved.
Could, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
I'm sorry?
I interrupted, I apologize.
You didn't interrupt.
So my question is, will we have occasions, an occasion, probably multiple occasions, when we will be, when we can go over and visit the site with mockups and sections of brick and to make sure we're comfortable with what's going to happen?
Yeah, that is the occasion, but usually, in the past, anybody can see it and report on it, but the consulting gives a report that this, what I just told you, meets the intent of how that brick looks in setting sun and not how it looks without the sun.
Right, I'm just saying, sorry.
Is there, is there any way to take a product that they're selecting, you know, --
And preliminarily --
And preliminarily approve it, so that --
For instance, there have been cases where there are two different mortars that are selected, and you choose which one makes the most sense. I don't know what the intent is, we haven't talked about that, and maybe I'm going into too much detail, but I prefer a lighter mortar, so you see the individual bricks. Not white, white, but a natural mortar color. We've talked about the painting finish on the clavat up above, and, you know, we have different thoughts on that, to be honest. I think, and I'll get to that, that the upper floor at the windowsill should be a different color, slightly different color, to break up the facades. It's getting to what Mr., what was said about the whole Swanton Street facade, how do we enrich it? So those questions, we'll see what happens after this report, after your comments on this report. I don't think it's dramatic. I think the intent is there, and we work with the intent. But I think we can always make a project feel more at home on its site and feel enhanced, given its size, in a one- and two-family residential neighborhood. So that's what I'm bringing. I'm not bringing change everything.
Right.
The original design, if anything, was over-enthusiastic, and we would have, I would have tempered it down a bit and maybe made some suggestions for improvement. Some of them are here, too, on the recessed commercial space. But the goal is to humanize it as much as reasonable, given the 250-foot-long facade that David brought up. And I get that. And we've had that conversation. The meeting was very cordial. There were no agreements made. They're going to look at it with the development team and the principal architect, and we go from there. But this is normal, going back and forth. So like, preliminary approval on materials, if you feel good about it, and I'll give my comments, is conditional on the materials wall with two different samples of brick, potential samples, two, you know, it wouldn't be huge areas, two different samples on mortar, perhaps colors, the two-tone that's up there, above and below, things like that. You know, for instance, the last thing I'll say is, in the renderings, it might not be the final recommendation, is the mullions are dark, either black or very dark green, I can't tell. Glass goes black during the day unless there are white curtains or shades behind it. In black glass and black mullions, the mullions go away. I would prefer the mullions being white, so those mullions pop and break down, the areas are black. Now, I get that there might be a difference in opinion, but that would be seen in the It's that kind, those kinds of things.
So the process?
Continues.
The process continues, but I'm wondering how much we can finalize some of those decisions beforehand, so that's --
Or at least give you guidance and say, stop going down that rabbit hole because it doesn't concern us.
I mean, I --
Say again?
Like, or go through and say, that's not a rabbit hole that we're worried about.
This is, from my perspective and projects I've worked on, this is standard.
What I would like, I'm going to interrupt you for a second.
Most of it will be, we approve it.
Yeah.
Or, I don't like it, but you approve it. And when I say like, I mean recommend, I don't like it.
Yeah.
There'll be a few of those, it's inevitable. We're different architects. And I'll make a case, and Michelle and her team will make a case, and we go from there. I'm just saying, not everything, how can it be nailed down?
Correct, it can't, because obviously, once they go to order that particular brick, that brick might not be available at that point in time, and then they'll have to choose a different brick. But I, I mean, my goal would be to make our decision be as sort of specific in spirit, I guess, to what we're trying to do, so that the building commissioner, who is ultimately the enforcement officer on this, has the latitude to then say, yep, this brick matches with what the zoning board and what the design review consultant, you know, came up with.
Okay, I will just say that.
Does that make sense?
Don't deal with the brick until you see a brick that you're happy about. Any brick is not necessarily the right brick. We need to humanize the bigger, this is a 40B project. It's a bigger project than what neighbors have around them. That's a given. So how do we humanize it? Humanize the scale as much as possible.
So are you suggesting that once we make a decision, and let's say the brick that we choose for this project is not available, you know, 12 months from now, or whenever it's going to be selected?
You can approve it.
That then it's, they're going to have to come back to us to approve the specific brick that they choose?
In all the projects I've worked on, and the ones I've designed, the client approves it, the field, wall, sample, client approves it, the town or city approves it, that it is consistent with the write-up.
Okay. And then who --
That is not the brick I would approve.
And then who, okay, but whatever we do decide, who then, in the field, after we've done this decision, who decides that it is consistent with the brick that this board has approved?
I will certify it for you.
So you would then, in the field, say later on, yes, this brick is --
Well, I don't expect them to be wrong, but it's never been wrong before.
I'm just asking, what's the process? I'm sorry, I'm just confused, like, like, we have a decision --
Well, they're going to submit other brick samples.
Right, but who, but do they come back to this board, or do they come to you, or do they come to the building commissioner?
Only if you want them to.
So we could defer our decision on the, on whether or not this final selection is consistent with what we have approved with the building commissioner?
In the spirit of what you recommend.
And we can make that conditioned, but then ultimately, it's the building commissioner that makes that decision?
If that person understands design, sure.
Don't shake hands.
Usually not.
I'm just asking, I'm asking what the process is.
Yeah, but, but you're agreeing with him that --
No, I'm not, no, I'm not agreeing at all. I'm, literally, I'm asking, what is the process, because --
Please, Michelle, there will be issues.
I mean, obviously, to come back to this board and press to schedule a meeting and come in front and like --
That has never happened before.
Okay, perfect.
There will be issues that will not be resolved, and you will make a decision and say, we're not happy with, we agree with the consultant, we're not happy with that. We'll give the go-ahead now with the condition that it gets resolved.
So, Michelle Littlefield from Cube 3, I agree with Dennis. There often are conditions of a special permit or 40B approval. An example of that is one of the comments in here is about rooftop equipment. We're not at the point where we have our rooftop equipment designed yet. The condition could state the rooftop equipment shall be as minimalized as possible and not visible from a public way by a pedestrian.
And successfully screened.
Or not visible from the public way by a pedestrian. We don't have to screen it if it's not visible. We don't want to put an undue condition on a project that doesn't actually need to be there, you know, six months down the line when we're able to actually evaluate it. So it's on our onerous to prove in a construction document level set that the screening is not going to be required to a level that the building inspector could prove that. We can include site sections in a construction document set that have sightlines indicated, and we'll do, you know, our, the engineering abilities that we have to locate those equipments in the right places. From a materials perspective, I would, the condition that we sometimes see is that they would be consistent with the design intent represented in the plans, elevations, and 3D images provided. We typically would agree that a brick should not be, hands down, selected right now, today, but that the general color palette would be the same, and that the intent of the brick would be similar. We do not get to mortar colors at this moment in time, so it would be on our onerous at the CD level application for a permit to be able to document in a way that the building inspector could, in fact, review that. There are municipalities that require test walls. I don't know if Winchester requires them for every project. That's something I'm not familiar with, from a design review standpoint. I know they're in the design standards for this project from the, from the development agreement. So we will likely build a sample wall. It's something that's done Bex practices on almost every single project, but we likely don't install three types of brick and multiple types of mortar.
It won't be three.
We would select the one that we think is the best for the project, and like Dennis is saying, it's, yeah.
Okay, so one of our conditions will be a test sample wall?
It could be. And you don't need to, at that point, have Dennis be the authorizing element. It's our onerous to do test wall inconsistency with the approved drawings.
But with our approval?
With your approval, or you can have it be the building inspector? You could put the --
Delegate to go and say, that looks the way we thought it was going to look.
I think Dennis is offering to do it as a service, so that you don't have to figure out who the one doing it is.
Was that, that was not part of your initial scoping, though, right?
Well, initial scope ends January 30th, and after that, it's on an hourly.
Okay.
Right.
And this is standard, as is reviewing drawings at design development, 90%, construction doc, very quick, it's half a day, construction documents for consistency, so you don't have to deal with that. I have no doubt that will be true, but the design details in particular will evolve.
So structural design details, it sounds like we can be very firm and consistent on, it's going to be the --
Well, 90%, 95% of the design you will see. I mean, they're --
So this is coming down to brick, paint, and mortar?
We believe, mullion color, but, you know, you might say, black is fine, but please look at class anywhere in any building during the day, and you will see what I mean.
I'm just trying to get a feel for what specific issues will be outstanding and will, will need to condition.
We don't know all of them yet, but there will only be a few. It'll be substantially, as the drawings indicate, with a few area, we might come to an agreement on the window mullion. They might twist my arm, and I'll say, all right, it's not worth fighting.
I would hope that the windows, as -- I would hope that the windows, as submitted in January, would not be a condition of, of the set. Whatever is approved in the final drawings and elevations would be what you'd expect.
Well, right, it's, I would agree with that, that there'll be discussions going on.
So, this is ongoing, you guys are still in this process, knowing that we have a January 30th deadline to bring materials into us that we can then act on, is the hope that at our next meeting, which we're going to schedule here before we end, that you guys have all this finalized, and we have a pretty clear list of-
That's the goal.
Okay.
So I'm confused about the state of the, really, it's the materials and the colors, in terms of who has the ultimate say on that. Who's going to actually have the authority to decide?
That's our decision.
Well, I want to hear him say it.
That is your decision, and I will do it if you ask me to, as I've done on every other project.
It's our decision to either-
It's all your decision.
It's our decision, it's going to be a condition, and it's our decision as to whether or not we approve-
Yes.
The final selection, if we defer, if we delegate that to Mr. Carlon, or if we delegate it to the building inspector.
The building inspector won't care.
The building inspector will care, but that's okay.
The color?
Yeah, I think, oh yeah, he's, he's-
He'll care.
He will, yeah, he's buttoned up.
I've not met this person, but I guess he's trained in that.
No, we have a new building inspector in town, and he's very, he's very diligent.
Okay.
So if we specify it, and we give enough detail in our decision, to enable him to then make, make the decision on the condition, he'll be able to-
Well, there will be samples along the way, and we will, I would pre-approve it, and we're just certifying that that is what we're going with.
Put it this way, I think if we do, if he does not have enough specificity to be able to make that decision himself, and to feel confident in that decision, he would come back to this board to ask us. So, and we could probably define it that way, we could probably condition it that way.
I would, I would say again, that the, the owners on the, the development team, if we provide a product that isn't clearly identifiable by the building inspector to be consistent, that delays the project.
Right.
So it's in our best interest to do our best to be consistent with whatever is approved. I will say that the 40Bs we've done throughout the state don't typically carry a peer review through past this stage.
Land development agreements can be much broader.
True. So, I, I think just the typical 40B is, is this is the approval, and it, you know, it does land in the building inspector's hand, this is the final.
Which is mine.
So you're saying, we wouldn't have that, we wouldn't vote on the materials?
Well, no, we would-
What is the render today?
But not beyond today, not after today.
Not when they do, no, well, not today, but eventually, yes, like, whatever, in January, yes.
Yes.
And then when they do the test sample in the field, that would be the building inspector who would be looking.
That's Tom, with the conditions we put on it going out, saying, I agree with-
So what would you-
And if Tom feels that it is such a change from whatever we've put into the decision, he would come back to this board for our approval of that.
Well, then it's not, it's not materially consistent with what the condition was, right?
So what would you expect to see here on January 30, when we meet from her?
Well, we're going to have to see more specific materials, and more specific-
Real, real physical material.
Yeah, and some options, and some various, and specificity with regard to the brick, and the composition, and the color, and the mortar, and-
And not, we're not talking about drawings, we're talking about bricks on the table here.
Well, I think we can also go into, like, how does it appear in various daylight, and the effect of the daylight, and what it is.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
I think those are all things that we can describe. Lauren, you want to pop in here, since this is more your area of expertise?
I'm trying to come up with a way of saying something that hasn't already been said, because I think that, like, that you've got it, like, they're going to present us with, like, a 95% design development set is going to be very complete with respect to what those exterior materials are, and how the building's ultimately going to look. So, we're going to see a lot more information than we're seeing on the wall right now. That should give us a good sense of what we like, and if there's something that we don't like, then that's probably the thing that we're going to have to put a condition on, where we're working with the building inspector, because I haven't met him yet either, so I don't know how he works. But, so there, and maybe there's like, a couple instances where we feel like, all right, we're not comfortable with this, but these materials, this looks good, and we know that this is what it's going to be going forward. So, it feels like it's going to become clear at that next meeting, when we have that design development set.
Sorry?
We should get some resolution on those areas, but I haven't been through a 40B in Massachusetts, so I need to defer to their expertise, because I do not understand fully how this process moves through a board like this. But I feel like we're actually going to get to a good place, we just, I don't know how to explain it any better than she did.
No, that was good.
I apologize for, for interrupting there.
Oh, no, it's okay.
To clarify, in January, we'll do updated drawings of what we have here, based on the conversations with Dennis and the refinements that we're making, they will not be at a 95% design development level at this stage, that stage.
Okay.
I would still consider them conceptual, and once we-
All right, he, he meant, so what, what, what stage are they, when you show them to us in January? Are you in DD, or are you still considered in, you're still in schematic design at that point?
Yes. We are not going to bring on a structural engineer or a mechanical engineer-
So you know if the project you're building-
Until we have our approval in hand.
Okay, no, and, and that, that makes sense.
And, and as you all know, passive house is a requirement by the town of Winchester now for the energy code, so there are a lot of exterior details that are going to be very compliant and dependent on that energy modeling, which is a performance-based energy model. So a lot of the things that we're going to do are going to be dependent on the science behind the energy model, and how we're going to develop those details and elements, so that we are going to continue to develop the project and continue to detail it, which will take a fairly significant amount of next year.
But what's, what we're going to see is the, the most fully realized, like, form of the building, even though we might not be able to say the exact detail around the window, or detail where the building comes together exactly at the corner, because that stuff is going to be based on the energy model that they're going to have to do after they get the approval, and that unlocks the next phase where-
And unless it rises to like, a material change or something, where they have to move things around.
Right, and, so like-
I'm working with them, saying, yeah.
Right, so-
Would you expect to see some bricks, for example?
I mean, like-
I mean, I, you know-
I, I think of all the stuff that they have to do, like, the brick is going to be one of the easy decisions that we get to make. So, but, I, yeah, I, I think that we should be able to feel pretty confident about the brick and the siding colors.
Right.
But if, we, we won't be able to press for exactly what the detailing around the windows and doors is going to look like, because that's going to be dependent on what the energy modeling says in the next phase. So, there might be instances where we have to come back, because they're like, oh, this detail is going to, we're going to have to detail this out in a different way than what we showed you, and then we'll have to work through that. But I don't think, I think it's going to be very fine-tuned details, and not like, oh, well, now we can't have brick on the bottom of the building anymore. Yeah.
So, the process, it sounds like, because I've never been through this before, is it's sort of a back and forth, you're coming in periodically and saying, here's where we are, and we don't know what to do about the mortar color now, because-
But hopefully, it should be like-
I don't know if it's coming to us, though.
Yeah, it's, and hopefully, it should be like, really refined questions, and like, short, like-
But, but to be clear-
They should be easy to digest.
I don't think it's a feedback loop back to us necessarily.
Right.
We are, we are going to look at a concept like that, maybe with some cleaned up stuff on it that looks a little different, and say, we like that, we're going to condition the project that it looks similar to that, that the bricks are in similar keeping, the colors in similar keeping, blah, blah, blah.
Mm-hmm.
And then they're going to go through their whole process, and in that, they will determine that they can't necessarily do some of that, for whatever reason, and it's Tom's decision at that point to say, is that such a change that it is running afoul of the condition?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Absent that, Tom is working with you guys through all that stuff, I think.
Yes, that is correct.
So, this is not like, this, keep coming back in front of us for the next year and a half.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, no, I think-
But the sample wall will happen-
Well, that would be a condition, right, to say, yeah.
-done with our decision.
Yes.
A year from now.
Yeah.
So, it will be Tom that will be looking at that sample wall, and then I think it's this board's decision whether or not we want Mr. Carlon to be, you know, also approving that, in terms of whether or not it's consistent, is that-
That's fine.
Am I on track with that? Is that something that's-
I'll make a recommendation, no matter what, for information for you to have, unless you tell me not to.
Well, so, yeah, so your engagement ends January 30th, and then it's up to us to say, okay, we want to bring him back on an hourly basis for discrete items.
Right, so we want to bring him back for the sample wall, we want to bring him back for-
If you want me to coordinate 90% design development, 90% construction documents, any construction changes, that's just part of the service.
I mean, my, at least from my seat, I think it's helpful to get through the design schematic, or the design, sorry, what was the word? Not schematic.
Conceptual.
Conceptual design, yeah, phase, and then, if we need to bring you back for other stuff, that's, so it might take-
Yeah, no, absolutely, I agree with that. Okay, so, is there anything more that we need to address on design right now?
Yeah, I was going to say, is there anything here that's like, worthwhile for us to go through, that are either sticking points where you guys are, feel like you're at loggerheads, and we need to opine on, or give it, or give it another?
This is my response.
Okay.
There is not, we've had a general open, fair and open discussion, the development team was present and had their comments, for instance, retail is likely not to happen, it will likely, more likely be office space, which changes the whole character of, at street edge, it's not a place that the public goes to in general. That's fine, you're fine with that. You know, there, it was an opening, if you-
How was that, how was that decision come about?
How was what?
How was the decision come about, that it would-
Developers' comments on what is viable.
Right, but it was initially presented that it was going to be a retail space.
I always thought-
Now it's shifting to an office space, how?
I think what I was trying to project is, we don't know, we, we just don't know at this point, who's going to come in. If some, if retail came in, that's great, we, we would like to see retail on the street also, we just don't know if that's going to happen. If somebody comes in, and a lawyer's office, a dentist's office come in, and they say, I want the whole space, nobody else has come forward, we're going to give it to the lawyer's office, we don't, we don't know. It would be nice to see a retail, that people are coming and going, you know, buying a paper, getting a cup of coffee, ideally, okay, ideally. Again, we don't know, that's all I was trying to project.
Okay. You just think it would be, you just, you're just forecasting that you think it's more likely going to be-
With the size and the-
Some kind of professional office space.
I think, again, I don't know.
Just based on your read as a professional in the field.
I have gotten, I have gotten calls already from some retailers that are interested, but I've gotten calls from other people, lawyers' offices also, or a bank, or what have you, so.
So how does that impact the design? So-
Presumably, you want to make it flexible enough to accommodate-
So we don't know whether it's retail or, or a lawyer's office.
We want to keep it as flexible as we can, as-
Well, our decision, our decision just needs to be, it needs to not lock him into being retail, because it could potentially be a professional office space.
Well, and, let's be fair, tenants change, so it may be retail now and change to office later, so I would err on the side of flexibility.
I mean, we don't want to see the commercial area sit, sit vacant.
Sit empty, right, we have another empty storefront for-
Doesn't help the city, the town, doesn't help us, doesn't help anybody.
And, I mean, as much as people want to see retail space there, and I'd love to see retail space, that somebody could walk in and grab a cup of coffee, I mean, as far as parking, yes, I like it, except for as far as parking, a professional office space might be more suitable to the neighborhood.
Are you, yeah, so, yeah.
You know, less in and out, less-
Yeah, I mean, I would say, err on the side of flexibility, because again, none of us know what's going to happen, nor, when something is there, how it's going to change over the ensuing five to 10 years, so have a design that can accommodate both, ideally, and let him manage it.
I would agree with that. Anyone else want to comment on that?
Well, I'll just say that I don't, I think retail's not the answer there.
Should not be the-
Or is, yeah, that makes sense, or no, that doesn't make sense. Well, both of us. And I'm happy to go through it now, and I'm sure Michelle will speak up when it's appropriate.
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
Oh, good.
So, just for Dorothy's benefit, I initially had said 8:30 because I didn't know how long this would go, so being, we want to be mindful of time too. We can extend if need be, but.
Well, what else do we, just for?
I mean, we haven't heard anything from Stormwater at all, so this would be the first kind of Stormwater conversation, I think.
Okay, so can we spend 10 minutes on this, do you think?
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I don't, just want to make sure we're keeping that in front of us.
We'll probably be less than 10 minutes on Stormwater.
Okay. Well, we're talking about design now, so I'd like to focus on that.
Yeah, yeah, let's fire through. You look comfortable, so you can.
And then we have Stormwater, and then is there anything else that we need to address after that? Public comment, right?
Public comment, yes, yeah.
Okay, great.
So once again, we had a very open discussion, positive discussion. We challenged each other in a few areas, but in a very professional way. It was a very cordial meeting. Under general comments, which is the second paragraph down, number one, the zoning waiver proposals, um, they are listed in the drawings on a peculiar drawing, parking and traffic control. I actually missed them. They all seem reasonable. If that is the extent of the ones that are design-oriented, that is not an issue in my mind. But if there are others, I, I have not received that document that David has in front of me.
It's a document that gives all, that lists all of the waivers.
So you'll have that between now and the next meeting?
What I was gonna say, yes, I'm gladly taking.
If there's anything you see in there that's, that it gives you trouble, you can come back with that.
What Michelle told me is that the ones in the documents, the drawings, are the ones that are relevant to design, and I'm sure that's the case. I just wanted to make that point stated.
But at some point, there, there's gonna be an opportunity to go through this.
Yeah, so.
I'm happy to do that. I have not received it.
Yep.
Number three on that was.
So who, who provides that to you? I'm just asking.
Carlo.
Carlo, okay.
Carlo should provide it.
And so I'll go back to my prior comment. Between now and the next meeting, if there's anything in there that seems like it was objectionable or different, then we can talk about it, but let's move to the next.
Okay, so Carlo needs to give him the drawing C3 parking and traffic and control plan? Is that, okay.
Well, the, the new list of waivers that Attorney Von Simms.
Is the plan?
Yeah, it's just the.
Is the new exhibit that came out, the deadline?
Yep.
Yep, exactly.
Got it, okay.
So, Attorney. That plan wasn't, we weren't changing anything. We just thought it would be a more useful way to just kind of highlight those spots where we're looking for a waiver.
Yep.
That's the plan attached to the waiver list.
Yep.
Yes.
Exactly. All right.
Okay.
Number?
Uh, no, we're still on, because we talked about, um, the parking level.
No, that is, that is fine. They looked into it and it doesn't impact the public domain. Or if it does, it's very minor, and it's done well, is what I'm trying to say. Number three, correlate unit plans with floor plans and facades. I noticed that their apartment layouts didn't directly relate to the facades and plans. And the answer there is they will change, alter the unit plans where needed. The facades and floor plans are accurate and are the architect's intent. Number four, so these are general comments. Number four, break down the facades, and in many ways, this is probably the major comment, including humanizing, what I said is humanizing, greater humanizing, the 250-foot-long facade on Swatton Street and with the nine-foot drop. And I said here, much discussion centered on that. And I suggested, um, instead of a balcony to the lobby on Swatton Street, make that a secondary entry, a car to access, just to add some elements of life along the street. And at the two bay windows, that balcony becomes a terrace. Um, so the balcony, it's hard to see because the trees, um, block it in the rendering. Again, trying to make a note down further at the bay windows.
We're actually can't see it.
There are three locations, so it isn't much. But at this bay window, it's actually a balcony for the lobby, and I'm just suggesting make that a secondary entry point. If a taxi drops off somebody for whatever reason there, or it's shorter to go down toward Hudson. And the other two balconies at the bay projections, and not really, bay windows, that they become terraces extending out five feet. So there's some articulation at the life of the building as the building comes down. The other thing I recommended is that brick actually go up to the second, on the bays, only the bays, that brick goes up to the third-floor window sill. Again, trying to add some more richness to the facade. Look, let's be honest, clapboard, precast clapboard is not the most attractive and detailed material. It's not even as thick as clapboard, wood clapboard. So I'm trying to add some variety to the building and richness. And that also be added in precast concrete, if that's, uh, a, a continuous window sill that goes through, and that the potential of painting the finish on the upper third-floor be a slightly different color than down below, and that would continue through. And the rationale again is to enrich the flatness of the materials, and they are flat. Concrete siding, and I'm sure the architect, Michelle and her team will deal with this, the siding tends to open up at butt joints. So to make sure that doesn't happen, there are details that you can do. So I think the material's fine in general, but there are issues related to it, the flatness, trying to enrich the character. And maybe it's the two left colors on the upper sample, the putney color at the second floor, and at the upper third floor, the lighter color. Again, trying to enrich the whole facade. These are recommendations, can be studied in the wall sample. That's why I'm emphasizing the need for that. Now, you might believe strongly that it's perfectly fine the way it is. I accept that. I'm giving you my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
That this is something that, that needs to be looked at.
Okay, so that's a discussion to continue, right?
Well, we can make comments on it right now, if anybody wants to. I have a few. So first comment is, I like the idea of having, um, that secondary lobby entry. I think we need to look at traffic along there. I, I don't know if it's feasible for somebody, for a taxi to pull up on that side. I don't.
I don't think legally.
I don't think there is any space there, especially if anybody's contemplating a bike lane, which I'm not really in favor of, but even if you don't have a bike lane, I don't think there's any ability to pull up there. Extending the other bay windows, I'm assuming those are residential units, so then?
They are.
So then the question is, okay, who's going to be maintaining, I guess, those balconies or those?
Well, it's two balconies, and the residents would maintain it. It's their.
It's their space, but.
I, I understand that, but from a, from a perspective of a building that's being managed by the developer or whoever ends up acquiring this building, I mean, now you have tenants that are potentially putting Christmas lights out there, or chairs, or whatever. It just, it just overcomplicates the management of the building.
This is not at the ground level, right? This is the one.
It's the ground level.
It is the ground level?
There are terraces on the courtyard.
Yeah.
Same issue.
But not visible from the street.
But not visible from the street.
But there'd also be like restrictions on use in terms of?
Of course there would be, yes. And I know that's, that's on the property management. I'm just looking at it like, you know.
So my only question on that is.
I'm trying to be developer-friendly here, which is to say, if I owned this building and I was managing it, I wouldn't necessarily want to have two particular units that had this outdoor space where?
They have terraces already. I mean balconies already.
They have balconies, okay.
So one of them put lights on that.
Okay, that's fine. If it doesn't, if it doesn't add complexity to the situation, I guess.
But they, so, sorry, my question on that, though, they will actually butt out into the sidewalk, right?
No, no, they would come out five feet into the planted area.
Okay, alright.
There'll still be plantings in front.
Okay. I don't want people to have to do that something down the road, so.
Fifteen minus about 13 feet of landscape between the existing projected bays and the property.
Okay, and then as far as like extending the brick, I guess my only question is, like, how, how much does that increase project cost? Does the developer see that as feasible? And I would also sort of comment that no one is going to be like looking at this entire stretch of the building like this, because it's sort of a narrow street, there's development on the other side. People are gonna be looking at it like sort of down the street. No one is gonna be facing it like head-on.
Yeah.
So just leave it the way it is.
I'm not saying that. I appreciate your comments. I'm just sort of, I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's a concern for looking down the street that you want to see some variation and, um, more. I'm just saying, like, no one's gonna be looking at this, this way. So when we're deciding it, we need to sort of keep in mind, it's what we want to see visually, looking down the street and looking up.
Yeah, from the angle that they presented to us, because that's the, probably the best view. Are some of the darker and lighter spots on that, are those just shading, or is that actually coloration difference?
There is shading on there, but it's also intended, we intended for some coloration to be between the vertical elements.
Yeah, like this vertical element, right, as I see.
The wall of the building.
Yeah, like, like you have these are light, lighter, right, and then these are, that's not just because they're shaded.
No, that's correct.
Yeah, so you do have some variation to the facade, okay.
Yeah, so I think, um, and so I think Dennis is just recommending that we explore that a little bit farther.
Yep.
And we're willing to look at almost all of the comments in the letter he provided you, sort of holistically with the building. To your comment, we do need to take costs into consideration, so we'll review them all independently, or not independently, I should say. We're not going to agree to do individual things, but we'll look at all the comments and find a way to enhance the building and enrich the building in a way that still fits the project goals. Um, the, the additional entry on Swatton Street, I will say, is sort of the one comment that we sort of feel strongly opposed to. Um, and that's for a couple of reasons. I know I didn't mention that before.
Opposed, yeah.
Opposed to. Um, there was a residential entry on Swatton Street before. It was much closer to the garage entry. It was sort of like a pedestrian, bike-focused entry. Um, and part of why we removed that was we did hear, and Brian did hear, comments from the neighborhood, um, that they were concerned about Swatton Street being too active with such a big building. So we did intentionally, and we sort of made this case in September, was force refocus the, the activity of the project to Washington Street, to the front, and really made that front door on Washington Street rather than on the corner. Um, and the building is 64 units, and so in, in our opinion, it doesn't need an additional door. People going to walk anywhere are, are willing to walk around the corner to the front door of this project. Um, there is an additional access to the building on the, in the rear setback from stair two. I, I see people using this stair. It's straight out of the egress stairwell. I have the site plan here too, if you want to look at it. Um, the types, the types of door, the types of tenants that will use that door are people that are, you know, in the stairwells, taking their dogs out. It's on the, the left side by Mr. Feigenbaum.
Yeah, right.
They'll, they'll take.
No, along the driveway.
No.
To David.
On David's side.
Oh, over here.
Oh, no, here it is.
Yes, over here, okay.
And so that does provide sort of a backdoor access for residents that might want to take their dog out and then come back in quickly, um, but it's not on the public way, and we find that that's, that's good. Um, I know that, uh, Dennis recommended sort of that first bay element would be where that entry is. Um, you don't see it here, but we're sort of programming that part of the residential amenity lobby as be, sort of being a fitness space, and an entry through a fitness space would, wouldn't work very well.
That makes sense.
And that makes sense to you, I'm sure. Um, and so.
Where, where is this fitness space supposed to be?
It's over here.
It's on this.
Yes, got, so right where he was suggesting the entry, okay.
Yep.
And so having, having two entries into this small of an amenity space can confuse tenants and renters and, and guests, and we don't want taxis stopping on Swatton Street.
I was about to say, yeah, having a door there invites someone getting dropped off, which is not, they're just gonna stop in the middle of the street because there's nowhere to stop and let their people out.
Right. I, well, my only, my only question was, and I, I already think I already have the answer, you don't have the width on that sidewalk, on that?
To put a park.
To put like a little turn-in space.
I don't think that when.
No.
No.
No. Transportation wouldn't want that, that close to the light. Alright, okay. No, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out. There is a question.
I, I accept the taxi question, but no, the taxis stop.
Everywhere.
And there's more than one lane there. And in Cambridge, where I live, yes, we have bike paths all over the place, and that's where the taxis stop, let people off and then drive on.
Yeah.
That's an urban, uh, town taxi system.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to not have Winchester be quite as urban as Cambridge, so.
On Washington Street in a lane.
So do we want to be helpful in trying to min, or limit what we're focused on? And like, I don't see the need to have a door there.
I don't have it, no.
Hearing all these comments, so let's.
That's fine.
Remove that from the suite of things.
Can I just ask a question? Is there a door going from the parking directly up into the, like, when they park underground?
If you're in the parking garage, you can either go up one of two elevators or one of two stairs.
Okay, so they have, they, the residents themselves have all the ingress and egress that they want. Perfect.
But I will say, seeing some, a little bit more, so we can visualize that facade differing, right? I think that is something that I would consider you guys continue to talk about, right?
Absolutely. In, in the meeting with Dennis, we actually had our 3D model on screen so that we could kind of move around it in real-time.
Move around in real-time, yeah.
So, um, we're willing to share sort of those more, a little bit rougher than the photorealistic rendering to convey some of those design intents from different angles and things.
Yeah.
I think that you would, well, unclear, but I think the building would benefit from being darker than it is. If you're coming back with alternatives, which you want.
Yeah, we're willing to study that.
From, given, no, 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 given everything else that's going on in the town and the development in the town, and we've talked about this being a gateway project, and as you leave this project and you head in towards the town center, you have St. Mary's, which is all red brick, both on the left-hand side of the street and the other side of the street. And then you enter into the town center and you have this beautiful building, which is all red brick. And now we're looking at another development at Converse Place, which I believe there are gonna be majority, you know, brick at that building. I think we do need to sort of have consistency with this project and bring more brick into the equation. That's my own personal opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see, I don't, I can't visualize what it looks like stopping at a window sill and things like that, so I'd like to see kind of how that plays out, but.
I do think we need to tie this building in though to what the town center appears like because of its proximity to the town center.
I made this speech last time, but it's a very important, extremely important building to the town, because it, it's, Washington Street is a gateway to the town from the north, and this is gonna be the first and most important prominent building. I mean, you know that, but, but we really want it to be inviting, to make sense with the Winchester architecture, and, you know, very sympathetic and.
So I think they, sorry, sorry, David.
No, you agree?
Yeah, yeah. But I was gonna say, I think they've got, at least on this one, they've got their marching orders.
Okay.
Let's look at that facade a little bit more closely. Let's figure out a ways to get some differentiation there, some life to it, right? Um, what are the, what are the other kind of salient points that we should give you some guidance on if we can?
I was gonna say, we, we definitely agreed to more brick. We came to this project looking at the immediate context, and the residential buildings in this part of town aren't brick. Um, and we didn't necessarily want to make the statement that the Melanson Development Project is the, the one-all and be-all of Winchester and the neighborhood. So we were trying to be respectful of that immediate context in, in going the approach that we have.
Well, I just, I see it differently.
Absolutely.
I, I see it as a very prominent building in that coming down Washington Street, and it should make a statement. Just my view.
I mean, 100% brick would be appropriate though, either, so.
No, I'm not saying that, but it would.
What I'm suggesting is we use slightly more brick to break up the massing and, and interest. And on Washington Street, at the two pedimented projections that you see on the right, that a brick, I get it that the brick might not come up the same on either side, but it should come up at least to waist-high, because concrete at the pedestrian level gets beat up, gets scratched, and the concept would be the same, the, those two bays would be called out with the columns coming down, but it clearly says the brick continues around the base of the building, not like on either side, but it recognizes it.
You're talking about in here?
Correct.
Not this you see as a, that's the good.
So did it point?
That it, the brick, it looks like that might.
He's talking about, uh.
Having a half, half-wall of brick or something.
Yeah, yes.
Not too high.
To continue as otherwise.
When I set my bike against it, I don't scratch the nice rim.
Right. Okay.
That's not where your bike goes.
That's true.
Okay, I, again, I'd rather you hear this now and not in January.
Yeah, absolutely.
Why didn't you bring this up?
Yeah, no, of course.
So the next one's easy. On the landscape plan, um, you'll notice that the driveways go through, a, a, access to parking in the, excuse me, service bay. That's old-fashioned. That says pedestrians stay out. And in typical town and urban design, you carry the sidewalk through. And yes, you, you have a bump up for the cars and a bump down. It's very basic. The sidewalk continues, about three-quarters of it continues through.
You give the visual priority to the pedestrian.
That's correct. And, and, and people with disabilities.
Yeah.
It's pretty.
Totally agree with that.
Very basic. I, I would bet that's the town standards now, anyway. I don't think there's, there's any reason not to do it, and you won't have people taking a sharp turn, going in as fast as they can. They won't do that here anyway, but this ensures it.
One comment I had the last meeting, I think you were here, maybe you weren't, but in the front, I think that need, along Washington Street needs more thought, because I don't think the idea of having a semicircular bench where everybody sits and watches the traffic stop at the light there is, I don't think it's inviting and I don't think it's good.
Well, that's on private land, so you, you, if you all feel that way, that makes an issue. My concern about that was if it was retail, and I agree, it's unlikely, I wish it were, something that the building could use. Um, my guess is the fitness center will have coffee inside, so maybe coffee shop is an important, or a restaurant. That's ideal. It's likely not gonna happen, and you would need ventilation through the building anyway. But even if it's office space, does it really want to be blocked with the public interface? Maybe so if it's office space, but you will see my comments question that. I don't think there should be an arcade. I think arcades can, there's a lot to go over. Arcades are paper-strewn, and they're dead space, and some people will find it a place to sleep that's hidden from public view. to sleep that's hidden from public view.
You're talking about this arcade?
Yes, I think the walls should come out to the building.
Yeah, no, it's the.
That's, makes sense.
I've been, already been given notice that we're hurting for time, so I, I don't need to rush through here.
If we need to go beyond.
Press on.
I asked about Swanton Street, you've all brought up, and the development team has brought up, that there isn't space for parking, so I'll pass on that. Next page. I mentioned the Swanton Street facade again, we talked about that. We talked about the residential lobby access, the proposed retail space, we talked about that. I said the typical bay-window expression is on one side, minor, and needs to be stronger. That, I will pass on that now. We don't need to talk about that. Don't need to talk about that, excuse me. Number four, the silhouette treatment is insufficient. Again, this, this is the Swanton Street law, constant line going through with three minor projections. All I said at the bay-windows is can the bay-window parapet walls go up a little higher? You know, you might not realize this, but people look at silhouettes all the time, and the houses across are pitched, Washington Street elevation enriches that, so I'm just, the silhouette needs to be a little richer, and it's one of the guidelines. You can deal with that any way you want, I'm not going to even stop here. Adding the parapet height a little bit more is minimal and would add some more character to that end.
So, for my sake, who understands about 30% of those words? Parapet, like, are we talking about putting? Like pitches on this, like some of this side?
Raising the height slightly.
It is the parapet, yes.
That's all it is.
It's still flat, okay.
Still flat, yeah.
Thank you.
We talked about roofs on that, and I agreed that it didn't make sense.
Okay.
This isn't me only telling, it was a give-and-take.
Yeah, no, no.
And I'm trying to report it accurately.
We're having a discussion.
Yep.
Here with me. On the utility units at grade, I said that they need to be screened and in a way that children can't come up to them. That's usually an open fence, metal fence, so yes, you can see it, but it's, it's sort of a filtered view. Landscape treatment can be in addition. Landscape treatment tends to derode, derode over time, if that's all you have around utility treatments, minor costs.
These are like, like the water meters and stuff like that, right?
No, there's, there's two proposed transformers on the site plan.
Near the garage entry.
The garage entry.
Okay.
No gas meters.
TG.
Thank you.
Mechanical equipment, we said that it needs to be screened, we already talked about that, if it's visible from public view. Private view is another thing, but if public view is definite, it shouldn't be seen. So, here's something that I, I feel unsure about, and I think you like, so I will be quiet. The fact that the two pedimented projections on Washington Street are identical, one is an entry to the building, and the other is the entry to office space, more than likely. That just didn't seem right to me. The more I look at it with this glorious sky in the rendering, maybe it's fine, but the treatment is Borden-Batten. I'm all for separate treatment of the facades at the projections, even the bay projections. The more I think about that, that makes sense, but above the third-floor sill that I'm mentioning, maybe that's Borden-Batten, too. So, there's an integration of the wall treatments. I know it's hard to read on those renderings.
I can see it, but.
The vertical lines.
You would put Borden-Batten.
Above the third-floor windows.
Oh, above here?
The third, no, the sill, sorry.
Above the sill, so it would be from here.
I was talking about different color, slightly different color, maybe, this is a recommendation, it's not, it has to be that way, I'm not saying that. I'm raising it to try to tie the elements together and, and make it feel, enrich the facade. The top, you know, there's a thing called the tripartite expression of buildings, which have really, in most buildings, been lopped off the top floor. Here, they tried to express it. I'm just saying of this subtle detail being added, we don't have to decide that now, that's in Michelle's hands. If she adamantly feels differently, I'm not going to convince you otherwise, I get that. I'm making the suggestion, again, to try to make the building feel like a whole, the different parts are connected, just like the brick at the base at the two pedimented projections at Washington Street. Pass on that. The plans are very straightforward and make sense, and we already talked about the unit plans. All I did in addition to this, and we're not going to talk about it, is highlight in the guidelines, the following pages, what still I feel needs to be emphasized, and it's in bold type. And we discussed almost every one of them by looking at the elevations and plans, so given your time limits, we don't have to discuss it, but it reinforces what I do, and I'll leave it there.
So, these are things that you would, that you would like to see us include in our decision?
Stronger. Stronger, oh, the, what I've highlighted on the first four pages, yes.
But no, the, the things that come after, starting on page five.
Do, need to be more strongly emphasized, and maybe some are fine, but I, I did not want to not, I know, let's do negatives, highlight something that is important. And we have discussed some, and I, and some are really more of a neutral position, others are stronger. I know in the past, there was a, for instance, you'll see in the written comments, there was a discussion of emphasizing the corner at Swanton and Washington more, but if we're going to keep the two pediment, and I think we are, projections, that, that's off the table. The facade emphasizes that corner.
Correct.
So, to me, the design review is to enhance what's there, I'm not the architect, I get that, but I'm representing the town to make it as handsome from a town point of view as possible, and they're on their way.
Can I ask you a question? This is something I brought up earlier.
Please.
They were going to put an artificial turf in at one point, did you have any comments on that?
On the courtyard?
Yeah.
It's, as I read it, correct me, it's only a portion of the courtyard now, and the rest is pavement, I assume?
Pavers and planters with landscape element.
That's fine, I mean, little kids prefer that, if it's not a lawn, but they have the lawn below the steps down, and to me, I saw that as like a five-year-old play area with the parent. There more than likely will be some kids here, but not a large amount of kids. We did talk about where the closest playground is, I know the athletic field, Michelle pointed at that, it's about three, two to three blocks away. If this were all families, you would definitely have a playground unit.
Yeah, no, that wasn't my question, my question was more just, do you, are you, are you in favor of the artificial turf, because that was, I think, above the.
It's on the, it's on the courtyard.
It's above the garage, or at least the parking garage. Do you have any alternatives to suggest?
No.
Okay.
If it's done correctly, it's a possibility, and I know it'll be done correctly.
Okay.
Do I like artificial turf? I don't even like it on soccer fields.
Neither do the soccer players.
Exactly, but in this case.
You feel it's necessary because there's going to be children living in the building?
I assume there'll be a two-year-old, three, maybe three families.
It's also an elevated place, it's harder to maintain grass, right?
I would ask the landscape architect on their team.
Is there, is there any possible alternative to, to, uh, artificial turf?
Michael answered that one.
Which we, which some of us don't think is great.
Michael Radner with High Point, I'm the landscape architect.
Oh, good.
Yeah. I, I have no strong feelings for or against artificial turf, I remember your comment from last time, Mr. Feigenbaum, so it does tend to get hot in the summer, we have a southern exposure. I'm going to add, go on a little bit of this detour here, we did have a meeting with the tree committee a couple of weeks ago, and they had suggested planting some trees, more trees either on the structural deck or next to it to shade it from the south side. I think that's a good idea, not on the deck, but to put them on the south side of the, of that, provides shade over, over time, it will take a few years, obviously, to get, to get them growing, but I, I have no objections to looking at alternatives to artificial turf there. We could expand the pavement a little bit more, we could do some more plantings there. I think that the, the grass area down below, the natural grass next to the parking lot, I don't think we want to do a formal play structure there, I think there's liability concerns, I think it's kind of excessive for a small apartment building, but can be used as an informal play area, there's nothing wrong with, you know, having, having toys out there and stuff like that, you might want to put a fence in between the parking area and the grass, just to keep kids from wandering over, but.
I think it would be useful to hear, not right this minute, but what alternatives there might be, you just said there might be some alternatives.
Yeah.
Dealing with the turf, what.
Yeah, it's a, it's either expanding the paving or expanding the planting area or a little.
Or it's not the turf itself, it's.
Yeah.
Reducing the amount of turf, artificial.
Or eliminating the artificial turf, I'm not, I'm not married to it at all.
Yeah.
So, I remember that, I recall the comment from last time, we're waiting to get all of the comments and the design back, and then we're going to come with a new design the next, the next time.
What would be helpful, I think, for me is to hear, what do you envision that space, how do you envision that space being utilized?
So, it's, uh, these spaces are typically used, not on a daily basis, so I'll be honest with you, some people tend to go out there, most people like to be in their own space, on their own deck or patio, and there are some patios on that, on that level, so what we do see is the, you know, if we have some, do we have barbecue grills?
Yeah.
Yes.
On this one, okay. They're very popular, so people tend to have small gatherings.
Yeah.
You know, have some friends over, the, the grills do get used, most definitely, so there's a dining function there.
So, it's more of like a hangout.
But it's a, it's a passive space.
Yeah, and I think there was seating out there, too.
Yeah, there's seating, yeah, we put benches and tables, not benches, soft seating.
You could bring a cornhole.
If I have 10 people over, I'd be like, let's go hang out on the patio.
You could be.
You could.
Tossing a basketball around, or a toss football around, maybe.
It's not quite that large.
Yeah.
It's a passive space, it's a hangout space.
Is it, is it large enough for like a little, a little kid with a tricycle to go up there and maybe?
No.
No, it's not, okay.
I'm guessing not. What's the dimension of that space, roughly? You probably don't remember.
The offhand, I don't know.
Okay, never mind.
Okay.
Just very roughly.
It's probably.
20 by 30?
It's probably 40 by 40.
40 by 40.
40 by 40.
For the whole courtyard?
For the whole, the, the turf, including the pavers.
So, this.
That's, that sounds about right, yeah.
Not the.
I mean, that's, so that's 1,600 square feet, it's the size of a large apartment.
Well, this room is probably 1,600 square feet.
This is a little bit smaller.
It's smaller.
It's smaller.
So, it's not, you know, it's, it's an intimate space, it's not a vast space, it's going to be mostly planting beds with some paver areas for seating and dining tables and a, and a cookout space.
It's a good space.
Yeah.
It'll be an amenity.
We, we've done a lot of these and at a similar scale, and maybe next time I can bring some photos.
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, it's a, it's a comfortable scale of a space, not too small and not to be.
Would you invite your cousin Celia over to have a pic?
I'm sorry?
Would you invite your cousin Celia over to have a, a lunch out there?
I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait for an answer on that, then I have a different question. No.
I mean, you, you know what I'm asking, is that.
Yeah, it's a comfortable, it's a comfortable space to have a few people over.
Sure.
In the.
Yeah. There's not enough space for a large party.
No, that's what I'm hoping.
We don't want that.
I'm hoping there isn't.
Yeah, we don't want that, we're not encouraging that.
Right, good.
In the prior ones that you've done, have they been mix of, or turf and pavers, or?
Uh, we've, we've done some turf, yeah.
Okay, it'd be interesting to hear, like, whether or not you feel like the residents have given you a different feedback of what they like more or less, so, I don't know.
The, the small, we have done some small grass panels about this size, this is not, I'm thinking of one that's not on a structural deck, it's on the ground, so even the small amount of grass for a, a parent to come out with their toddler or their baby, just gives a little bit of relief.
Yeah.
To the pavement.
Than having all pavers everywhere.
Than having all pavers everywhere, but having a natural turf panel on a structural deck has its challenges to maintaining it, watering it, draining it, et cetera.
Yeah, completely agree with that. I'm just questioning whether, I'm just questioning whether you just do more pavers.
Yeah.
And get rid of the turf, if it's just going to be a hangout space, right, so.
Yeah, so we need to reconfigure it a little bit, and we'll come back next time with a better image of it, okay?
Okay.
All right, anything else on design?
I don't have anything else, I know we're sort of over time, but we want to hear from Stormwater, so.
Thank you.
Are you good? Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks for the help.
Stormwater, 10 minutes, you promised us.
You said, you promised us 10 minutes, yeah.
We could do a list in there. For the record, Rich O'Connell, I'm Joe O'Connell Associates over in Stone.
Aaron Wilson with VHB in Waltham.
So, we got this in the middle of all the holidays, and we got VHB's comments right around Thanksgiving time. We went back and forth, we have had some conversations, we had a very nice meeting on Monday, Aaron was there, Brian was involved, Matt Schuman, the town engineer, myself and Luke, and we got a lot accomplished, because we had already gone back and forth with some draft comments. So, we got, we got some refined direction, we kind of know where we're going now, where this is heading. The plan is to get revised plans, updated plans over to the town and, and VHB, hopefully within the next week before the holiday, the next holiday, and then we do very well talking back and forth amongst ourselves, so by the time we get back in here, whenever you set a date for the next meeting, we're probably going to be pretty well along, if not finished. The good thing is, 95% of what we do, you don't see it, you're not going to want to know the color, nor the material.
David might want to know.
I'm telling you, David, you don't want to know what's in there. Just saying. So, that's kind of my summation, Aaron, I don't know if you want to.
No, I, I agree.
You've got eight minutes.
Monday was very productive when we had the meeting with your team and the engineering department, we worked out a few of our outstanding comments, response, we had looked at these preliminary comments, and I don't think we have any overarching orders at this point.
Cool, so next time we get together, we'll have a, hopefully, we're all good in the conversation.
We'll, we'll share everything with the town.
Yep.
Of course, because we, we'll go through engineering office, so, but there'll be some revisions to the plans, a little different look at the stormwater, but we're still going to do all the good things that we said we were going to do with cleaning and collecting and, and all that.
Right.
Okay.
Cool.
Great. Great.
That was three minutes, by the way, so.
Questions?
I don't have any questions, no?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so it looks like we need to schedule the next meeting?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, I'm so sorry. Do we want to schedule the next meeting first? Can we do that first? Well, I guess we can't really continue until.
No, but we can at least figure out a date that works.
We can discuss, yeah, let's do a discussion on who's available, when, and when.
All right, so the options are Wednesday, Wednesday, January seventh, Thursday, the eighth, Wednesday, the fourteenth, Thursday, the fifteenth, which is our normal ZBA meeting at night, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, and Thursday, the twenty-ninth. So everybody open their calendars, and let's play this game.
I'm out of town on the seventh.
Okay.
I get, I get back the morning of the eighth.
Okay.
So I could do Thursday, the eighth.
All right, so, remove the seventh, done, eighth, I can do the eighth.
I can do the eighth.
I can.
You cannot do the eighth?
I can.
Okay, you can do the eighth? On, yep, okay.
Fourteenth, fifteenth, I can do both.
Yeah, I can too.
Can too, sorry.
I can do fourteenth and fifteenth, yep.
Andrew? We're going to assume Harut can make all these.
Just all of them.
He's at a party tonight, so he's.
Lucky him, okay.
And then twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
I'm free both of those.
Yes, I can do that.
Two.
Yeah.
So now on everybody else on the, all the other folks.
Prefer not so soon with the holidays, we would prefer.
A little bit later to give you some time, yeah.
So not the eighth?
Well, um, twentieth, yeah, I, um, I'm trying, correct, uh, I'm wondering if we might be able to do the, the fourteenth and the twenty, I can't do the fifteenth, but, um, I'm thinking that the January seventh, they might be a little bit too quick right after the holiday.
Right.
So perhaps we could hold the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, um, to. See what we can get accomplished between now and the fourteenth, and then, um, if the boys want to maybe schedule two meetings while we're all here.
Yeah.
I think we can, right?
Well, I think we, we can sort of tentatively agree to those dates, and then we continue to the one.
To the first of them, right.
And then the next, we would, yeah, so we continue to the fourteenth, and then with the understanding that then we would again continue, at, at the fourteenth, we'll do another continuation to the twenty-eighth, but we can all hold those dates. Does that work?
Well, if we're going to have a full meeting on the fourteenth, also on the fifteenth, two days of.
Fifteenth is our regular meeting, yes.
Fifteenth is regular.
And I think you said you can't do the fifteenth, right?
I personally have a.
Come on, okay, fine.
But doesn't matter, that's our regular, that's our regular meeting anyway, right?
Yeah.
Well, I was going to suggest conflating them, but if Mark can't make it on the fifteenth, so I'll keep the fourteenth and the fifteenth.
I think we should keep them separate at this point.
Yeah, that's fine.
That might be a median of one, that it's going to be hard to, especially if everybody has their answers and stuff.
Well, plus then they're all, their consultants have to sit through everything else, it's, yeah. Okay.
And, wait a minute, and twenty-eighth?
And the twenty-eighth, yeah.
I'm sorry, the fourteenth, and then our regular meeting's the fifteenth, and then this, this petition would then continue on the fourteenth, we'll continue this petition to the twenty-eighth, tentatively.
Yeah, so hold it for now.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone good? Dennis, are you good with those?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Everybody else speak now, forever hold your peace.
Okay, so we're going to open it up for public comment?
Yes.
If anybody has come up and introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jean Chastain, I'm in a butter, I live at two six six Washington Street, which is two houses, uh, almost away on the same block as the project. First, I'd like to say I'm excited about a residential unit, uh, project going in. My reservations are about traffic and parking, as is true for most of the abutters. So I'd like to focus on three things. I try to read as much of the latest documents posted as possible. It looks like for residence, there's one space, parking space for each one bedroom, and two spaces for each of the two and three bedrooms. And then for commercial, there's only eleven spaces. So I don't know how many people are going to be employed in thirty-eight hundred square feet, but if it's eleven people, I really don't understand where the customers or patients or people visiting that office are going to park in addition to guests that are visiting, uh, people that live there, um, or home health service workers or whatever. So my biggest concern is, where are all these people going to park? Because if they're not there, they're already in a very overcrowded side street, M. Washington Street, right now. The second thing, I wanted to comment on, one of the reports, the traffic report that was posted suggested decoupling the rental of the apartment units and the rental of the parking spaces. Uh, I just know as having a child, an adult child looking for a place to live, that when, you know, you look at rent and so you have to spend another hundred and X dollars or two hundred on a parking space. If there's an option not to buy the space or rent the space and park in the neighborhood, I see that as a very high incentive to park in the neighborhood. So I don't know how you manage that, but I was really unhappy or concerned when I saw that comment.
That was just a suggestion, just so you know.
No, and I agree, if you don't need the two spaces, I'd love to get a credit for the second parking space if I'm in a two or three bedroom. I mean, I think it's great to ask, and you should get the credit, but to advertise it that way, I think change is the dynamic of it.
Thank you.
Third point, I would like to challenge the notion or the misconception that the neighborhood wants retail. We've never wanted retail. We walk to town all the time. I don't understand why it can't be residential only, but I submitted to the public, uh, record several abutters in an email interchange in twenty-twenty-two, um, about everyone keeps saying that the abutters want retail, we do not want retail. There's just not enough capacity. To be successful, you need a lot of business, a lot of business, you need a lot of parking, and there is no parking, so.
Can I ask your opinion, would you see a professional office there thriving, like a dentist office?
I think it could, but again, I'm worried about the eleven spaces. If you have four chairs, a dental hygienist, and three other people, um, I mean, I don't know if that goes up there.
But if you have eleven spaces, that leaves you with seven additional spaces, right? Potentially, I mean, depending upon what the, what the util.
Well, thirty-eight hundred square feet's a lot of commercial space. You could probably have three dentist offices, unless it's one of those enormous, you know, multi-doctor types of things, in which case, again, it keeps going back to, I still can't figure out the math on all the employees of that place, as well as the staff of the building, um, visitors. Where do the visitors park in the daytime? So that's the thing that just doesn't add up for me, is the parking. Traffic is going to be terrible, I, I mean, it will be if it's retail, it'll be just exponentially worse, so, anyway.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay.
No?
Do I have a motion to?
Yes.
Continue, anybody else have anything else to say?
To make sure there's nothing else in front of us here.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear more about the parking next time, from the developer. I'm just making a statement.
Okay, that's fine, we can, we can spend some time discussing that next time.
I think it's an important issue.
On the parking?
Yeah.
In terms of our, uh, just our rationale for why we feel the parking is appropriate, in terms of the.
How many spaces there are, what your studies show, what your thinking is, what, is it realistic to think that we're not going to end up with a big problem on Washington Street?
How do you, how do you see that professional office space on the first floor, using and?
Certainly, we could have further dialogue, and I do want to remind the board that, uh, in addition to the eleven commercial spaces, which, by the way, would be available evenings for the residential, so to the extent that there's a vice versa concern, you've got that cross utilization to be able to use them. I mean, there are, um, four, uh, on-street parking spaces that are going to be right in front of the building. I'm not suggesting that those are exclusive domain for, for the site, but I think the reality of it, just given its proximity to this building being right in front, I think they're more apt to be used by, uh, either patrons of, of, of this building as opposed to, to others. So, I mean, we, we do feel very comfortable with the parking. I know that Scott Thornton did provide some data before from, from ULI and some other, um, you know, empirical data, just indicating that our parking ratio is consistent for a, a site like this.
Do we, is that, do we have that?
I believe you do, yeah. But, you know, certainly we could, um, go through that again if, if, if you feel necessary, but, so.
And, and, and the suggestion that was made to sort of make it more à la carte and sort of uncouple it, that's not something that you guys are entertaining, correct?
We, we really weren't, I, I think Scott did touch upon that concern that, uh, I think that the prior speaker mentioned as well, which, you know, it may prompt people to.
Unintended consequence, right? We talked about it.
Yeah. So, and, and lastly, I do want to remind the board that, uh, the vast majority of the units are going to be one-bedroom units, so, that, I think, is, is relevant to, you know, the, the parking as well. That, you know, you're not apt to see multiple vehicles, um, in a, in a one-bedroom. Not saying you won't have, you know, a couple in there that each have a car, but you could also have, you know, a single, um, professional that doesn't have a car at all, so, um, I think it balances itself out a bit, so.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Great.
Good. Do I have a motion?
I would move to continue petition forty BZ twenty-five dash forty B one to January fourteenth, at seven PM in this, in this room, yes, because it's available.
In the select boardroom.
Yep, in the select boardroom.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm Mark Anderson.
I'm Dorothy Symboli.
I'm David Figer.
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
I'm Mark Anderson.
I'm Dorothy Symboli.
I'm David Figer.
Don't touch it, what's on deal with that?